Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this June 12th meeting of the Thousand Oaks City Council to order. And can everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
May the City Clerk please do the roll call?
Councilmember Fox is absent at this time. Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Protem Bill de la Pena?
Present.
Mayor Irwin?
Present. And Councilmember Fox will be about an hour late. He is at a function for his children. Item four, request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. Item five D, the introduction of the New West Symphony artistic director, will be rescheduled to a future meeting. And item seven G, the undergrounding of the existing overhead electrical lines on Westlake Boulevard has been pulled. And we are on to special presentations. City Council has had the pleasure numerous times in the past of recognizing outstanding achievements by our local students. We have recognized CIF and world champions in sports, academics, and mock trial competitions. And tonight, we are recognizing two great teams from Newberry Park High School. Tonight's first group are the founders of the Newberry Park's Sparkle Cheerleading Club. I would like to ask Dr. Margaret Salat to please join me. Good evening, Dr. Salat. In 2010, 2011, a group of enthusiastic students and their advisors invested a great deal of energy and time to establish the school district's first Sparkle Cheerleading Club. I would like to ask Dr. Salat, Director of Special Education for the Canejo Valley Unified School District, to tell us about these young ladies.
Thank you, Mayor Irwin. Thank you, councilmembers. I would like to take the opportunity to tell you that we are the proud, proud school district that has the first Sparkles Cheerleading Squad in the state of California. There are a few cheerleading squads in other states, but ours has had national recognition from Oprah Winfrey and from ABC's Everyday Health programs. These young women were a successful cheerleading squad to begin with, and our charter members approached me with two of their sponsors, Mrs. Debbie Hannah and Mrs. Cara Witt, to begin to incorporate children who were members of the school community who had special needs. Together, they, with also their staff sponsor, Mrs. Brenda Sampson, and the support of Mrs. Wong, the principal and leadership team, incorporated our children, who are easily disenfranchised often, into creating a powerful, wonderful team that brings a lot of cheer, a lot of spirit, and a lot of goodwill to the school community and to the community at large. And I'd like to thank you for recognizing them and for recognizing our wonderful school. Thank you.
So we have some certificates for the club originators, and we really want to compliment you for helping others to shine and making high school a success story for the Sparkles Cheerleaders and their families. And can I have Janelle up here? Los Rios? Taylor, and I won't even try to pronounce your last name? Debbie Hannah, who's the parent advisor? And then we have Cara Witt, parent advisor. And I think most of these club originators are now in college, right? Very good. So they founded the club. And now, we have a special surprise for everybody. The Sparkle Cheerleaders are going to cheer for us. For our second special presentation, can I have Elaine Hagan please join me? Our next special presentation tonight also recognizes a group of outstanding youth. They are the winners of this year's Trails Education Days Writing Contest. Over 1,000 5th graders attended this educational and exciting program organized by the Canejo Open Space Foundation and the Trail Advisory Committee. This program does an excellent job of teaching our youth the importance of enjoying and protecting nature while staying safe. Elaine Hagan, Vice President of the Canejo Open Space Foundation, will tell us more about the program and introduce this year's winners.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Irwin and councilmembers. I've been privileged to be involved with Trails Education Days for as long as it's been in existence. And it's a program for 5th graders, and about 35,000 5th graders have attended so far. I'd like to introduce you to Julia Osborne-Gurley, who is the president of the Canejo Open Space Foundation, and she's just going to say a couple of words also.
Good evening. Elaine Hagan actually started Trails Education Days, so she deserves a lot of credit. All of the 5th graders in the Canejo Valley School District are invited to attend this outdoor workshop. First, we have a hike into our open space with interpretive hike leaders that tell them about the plants and animals that they encounter. Then they attend various workshops to learn trail safety and about the various animals that they might encounter. And after Trail Education Days is over, the students are invited to write an essay about their experience and what they learned. And this year's winners were really outstanding. They wrote amazing letters, and they're here tonight. This is the 21st year that we have done this program, and it continues to grow and enrich and educate our children about our open space. The bulk of the funding comes from the Canejo Open Space Foundation through grants, one of which is the Thousand Oaks Endowment Fund, and through memberships and donations. So if you are a member of the foundation, these are your membership dollars at work. I will now turn this over to Elaine Hagan, who is going to introduce this year's Trail Education Day Contest winners.
Yes, thank you. And I think Mayor Irwin is going to present the winners with some certificates. First is Olivia Simon, a former 5th grader at Glenwood Elementary School. Next, Hannah Chernowski from Madrona Elementary School. Kaylin Pender from Lang Ranch Elementary. Rocco Basile, also from Lang Ranch Elementary School. And Gabrielle Nardekia from Westlake Hills Elementary School. We're very proud of these winners, and we know that they're going to be growing up to be good stewards of the open space, and we'll see you on the trails.
We are, thank you, ladies, for everything you have done over the last two decades, at least, for open space and open space education. We're going to take some pictures, and we also have some city pins. We'll ask the councilmembers to come and join us for the pictures, okay? So go ahead and get on the... District sure knows how to teach kids to write because they did an outstanding job. Would our cultural affairs director, Barry McCombe, please join me, please? Our city's theaters are two of the most prized features in our community. We have been able to provide first-rate entertainment to hundreds of thousands of patrons over the years, and this opportunity is available within a short drive from our home. This upcoming season promises to be one of our best, and Barry is here to tell us more about what is coming to Thousand Oaks.
Thank you very much, Mayor Irwin and members of the council. It is my pleasure tonight to announce some of our upcoming shows for our new season, which begins in September. One of the big changes we're making this year is rather than announcing our season as 12 months and sending out one program guide, we're actually breaking it into four smaller periods of four months each. So the brochure that will be coming out in just the next few weeks will actually be covering the period of September through December, and that's actually what I'm going to discuss tonight. Then we'll be issuing our next brochure around the 1st of November, which will cover the spring months. The other main change that we're making this year when you get your program guides is we're introducing what we're calling a Pick Your Own Subscription Series. So rather than having to subscribe to a series of shows that we've already selected for you, instead, you'll be able to pick among all of our offerings, and then based on the number of shows that you decide to buy tickets to, you'll get a corresponding discount. So we think this will provide our patrons with a lot more options to meet their specific tastes and desires. So we do have some slides which we'll be showing as I announce some of our season tonight. Starting off, our year will be the return of Benesse. Benesse is actually a local resident, so he's part of kind of our homegrown series. His show is a blend of theater and music and draws from influences of Spanish flamenco, Argentine tango, and Brazilian samba. It's really a high-energy show, and when he was here last, sold out. So this is a show you want to get tickets for early. Special for the upcoming election, we've booked Capital Steps. And if you're not familiar with Capital Steps, they're a political satire group that was actually founded by congressional staffers. And I'm sure they'll have a lot of interesting comments to share with us about the upcoming election. They're here on October 1st. We're also bringing back the Kingston Trio, who have not been in the Thousand Oaks Cavali Theater for quite a few years. They certainly are known for their pop music and folk stylings, and within just the last couple of years, have actually started to enjoy a resurgence of their popularity. From a family standpoint, we're bringing Clifford the Big Red Dog. Obviously, Clifford is a show about the American Children's Book Series about a big red dog named Clifford. So we'll be having a school show during the day, and then a public presentation of Clifford in the evening. One of our newest additions to our calendar is Mike Birbiglia. Mike is actually a comedian, and if you are a listener of NPR Radio, you'll know him from his appearances on several shows. This is actually a co-presentation with KCLU Radio, and Mike is actually doing his one-man show, which appeared off-Broadway, called My Girlfriend's Boyfriend. And we, again, expect this one to be a sellout for us. One of our more exciting offerings, which is very unique to Thousand Oaks, is we are presenting Debbie Reynolds and Carol Channing together onstage, and there's only one place you'll see that, and that's here in Thousand Oaks. They are not two performers that traditionally perform together, but we were able to create this special package. They'll be here on November 9th. They'll be sharing a lot of stories about their individual careers. They'll perform individually, and then they'll also do some numbers together. So we really think this is one of those once-in-a-lifetime opportunities for folks. As we move into the month of December, we have two of our contemporary attractions. The first is Manhattan Transfer. They certainly are the popular jazz, swing, and pop vocal group, and they will be doing a special holiday show for us. So Manhattan Transfer has been here before, but this is the first time they'll be doing their holiday show. And in her debut performance with us will be LeAnn Rimes, who of course is a Grammy-winning country-pop songstress, and again, she will also be doing a special-themed holiday show. And for LeAnn, we're one of only three venues in the entire state of California that she'll be stopping at on this leg of her tour. What is missing from our lineup is the announcement of actually several popular contemporary concerts. One of the challenges we have is a lot of performers that we present here also perform in the summertime at the Greek Theater and the Hollywood Bowl. So we are contractually precluded from telling you who some of our special guests will be, but I encourage you to visit civicheartsplacid.com. And our first announcement will take place on August 1st, and then we'll have some others that will roll out, but I promise you, we have some great surprises in store for you. As we move on to our offerings here in the Sheer Forum, we're actually introducing a new series of shows this year, which we're calling Friday Night Funnies, and it's actually a series of comedy shows. The first is called The Laugh Pack, and The Laugh Pack is actually a stand-up comedy night that kind of has a Las Vegas vibe to it. There'll actually be a house band. We'll be presenting them in our cabaret setup with drink service at your tables, and there'll be, for each of these shows, a different selection of comedians. We're actually very excited because the headliner for our first show on September 28th is Wendy Liebman, who is a very popular headliner at comedy clubs. And each time Laugh Pack comes back, there'll be a different singer, there'll be a different lineup of comics, and we'll have a different headliner. We're also bringing back The Three Blonde Moms, which is a show that really focuses on the lives of three stand-up comics and their stories of raising kids and married life. It has been here before, has sold out each time, and we're happy to have it back again in our schedule. Finally, here in the Sheer, we're presenting the Musical Theater Guild series, and actually we're doing their entire season of shows this year. Musical Theater Guild do what are called concert stage readings. They have a live orchestra that does accompany them. They have some simple set pieces. They do dress, but they carry scripts because they've actually only gone through the show a couple of times. But the nice thing about this series is many of the actors and actresses that appear in it have very significant Broadway credits. In fact, when Little Women was here just a couple of months ago, one of the actresses in that particular production had appeared in Wicked on Broadway. So it's an opportunity to really see some great talent. As we move on to our resident companies, the New West Symphony is returning for another season, and this is an exciting season for them because they have named their new musical director. They will actually be here at the next council meeting on June 26th, and they are hopeful that they'll be able to bring Marcelo to actually introduce them to you that night. But I've had a chance to meet with him, and I think he's an exciting addition to the New West schedule. Cabril Music Theater has a great season, I think, coming up. One of my favorites is Legally Blonde, which is taking place as their summer show next year. Those are always very special shows, and we encourage everyone to come out and support them. Their first production will be 1776, which launches in October. And then finally, of our resident company's Pacific Festival Ballet, their next production is The Nutcracker, and I like to say that it's the only nutcracker that they guarantee a chance of snow. So I guess you'll need to come and figure out what they mean by that. And then we have our two signature series. The first is Theater League, which of course brings our Broadway touring shows, and they have a great lineup this year, and we're very excited because the first show is the 25th anniversary touring production of Les Mis. And Les Mis actually, I believe, first played here in the very first year the theater opened and holds the box office record for Thousand Oaks. So we're very excited to have that coming back. And then our Distinguished Speakers series. And you can see by the lineup there, they've got some very impressive guests this year. Steve Wozniak, the co-founder of Apple, will be kicking off their series in October, and we're also very excited to have Carolyn Kennedy coming in February of 2013. So the shows that I've mentioned tonight will actually go on sale the end of this week, and actually, if you'll go to the last slide there. For those of you here tonight and those of you watching on television, you'll notice we have an offer code here, which is T-Oaks. If you actually go online to purchase your tickets or stop the box office, you'll have an opportunity to actually purchase tickets to any of these performances before they go on sale to the general public. So that's certainly not a complete list of the shows that we have coming up, but kind of gives you a little bit of a preview. We like to think we've got something that hopefully will appeal to everybody in the coming season, and we hope to see you at the Cavali Theater. Thank you very much.
And for our final presentation, I'd like to ask Newberry Park's varsity baseball coach, Matt Goldfield, to join me. Tonight, we are celebrating our 2012 CIF Southern Section Division One baseball champs. Can we give them a big round of applause? These CIF champions are examples of what hard work and commitment and excellent coaching can accomplish. Congratulations to this great team and to Newberry Park High School. Also, thank you to the Canejo Valley Unified School District for the good job they do in supporting sports in our schools. Coach, will you introduce the team? And also, when's the last time you guys won a CIF championship?
1968.
Wow. Quite an accomplishment. So if you could introduce the guys, that'd be great.
Absolutely. First off, we have Zach Brower, so come on up. Trevor Leca. Austin Mason. Thomas Ponceli. Blake Rochlow. David Weiss. Daniel Barnett. Scott Caligiri. Joe Christian. Xander Clark. Ricky Davis. Luke Eubank, who's not here tonight. Matthew Haskins. Nick Lovello. Christopher Murfree. Colton Walner. Let's see. And now the coaches. Rick Nathanson. And assistant coach Brett Taylor.
Yep, I'm up. That's all.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to thank you to the mayor and the city council for having this outstanding baseball team here. It's quite an achievement that these boys pulled off. It's really an incredible journey, and I want to thank all of Thousand Oaks. We had 4,500 people at Dodger Stadium and Newberry Park that were at our game, and it really was like having a 10th man on the field. It was incredible. And so this baseball team is an outstanding team, the best team in the community, the best team that's been out here in 45 years, and I just want to thank everybody. It was an amazing journey. Thank you.
And I think we have the superintendent and the principal here too, so maybe you can join us for the picture. Oh, okay. All right. And we are presenting to Newberry Park High School accommodation in honor of Newberry Park High School Panther Baseball 2012 CIF Southern Section Division One Championships. Whereas Newberry Park High School Panther Baseball finished their season with an overall 21 wins and six losses, and whereas Newberry Park High School Panther Baseball Team defeated Long Beach Wilson, El Toro, Saugus, and number-two-ranked Modern Day in playoff games, and whereas Newberry Park High School Panther Baseball is now ranked number one in California and number 17 in the United States, and whereas Newberry Park High School Panther Baseball defeated Corona High School at Dodger Stadium on Friday, June 1st, 2012, thus becoming the 2012 Division One champions, whereas starting pitcher Luke Eubank was named the CIF Player of the Year and Head Varsity Coach Matt Goldfield's CIF Coach of the Year. Whereas the Newberry Park High School Panther Baseball Team served our community with distinction, I, Jack Irwin, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend the Panther Baseball Team. Congratulations.
Our principal, Mrs. Wong, would like to present the city council with something.
Mayor Irwin? On behalf of Newberry Park High School... Mayor Irwin, on behalf of Newbury Park High School, it is my pleasure and honor to present this panoramic photograph that was taken of our team at Dodger Stadium. The team is largely in the Dodger home side dugout, but through the miracle of Photoshop, they're also in action poses in the front.
Excellent.
And it is mounted and signed by every member of the team.
All right.
Some of whom you'll be able to say you knew them before.
Okay. You guys put up a picture.
Give me my pen, Newbury Park High School. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, bro. You hang on to that, son.
Yeah. Everybody, thank you. Give me my pen, Newbury Park High School. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, bro. You hang on to that, son.
Yeah. Everybody, thank you. Give me my pen, Newbury Park High School. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, bro. You hang on to that, son.
Hey, yeah. Now, back to the person. Is there a line in the bathroom?
Tell me there, Mary, I'll get it.
Oh, are there much in the bathroom? I didn't hear.
You're welcome. I'm not doing anything.
Okay, that's good.
But we're pulling aside each other. We can introduce it later, right? Okay. All right, we are on public comments. Can I have the city clerk, please, announce?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Six people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Our first speaker is Ruth Drobbin. Good evening, Ms. Drobbin.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, council members, and city manager Mittnick. My name is Ruth Drobbin. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks and also a survivor of the Holocaust, which was a mass genocide of an estimated 17 million people all over Europe. Six million of which were Jews, 11 million of various ethnic groups, including disabled and mentally ill. This is a historical and humanitarian, not a religious, effort that encompasses all people. I have spoken to senior staff members about this importance of this. I'm not requesting a large memorial, but a small remembrance of a historical occurrence in World War II, which will be completely funded at no cost to the city. I have ideas of the location for it, but I'm willing to discuss it further. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Drobbin. The city manager will address you at the end of public comments. Our second speaker is Debbie Gregory.
Good evening, Ms. Gregory. I'm Debbie Gregory. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm here tonight, I have some very good news for the residents of Thousand Oaks. Yesterday, the Right to Vote Initiative was turned in with 10,421 signatures. They only needed 7,279. It was turned into both the county and the city. This shows how important it is to the people of this community to have the right to vote, which was taken away by the Fox regime with Mrs. Irwin voting to appoint Mr. Price to Mr. Gillette's rather than allowing an election. There were three years of the term, and election is in November. It is now June. But they decided that in order to keep their power base, they were going to take the right to vote from everybody. So now 10,421 people have signed that. That will be an initiative on the ballot, and it should demonstrate clearly how outraged people are about having their right to vote taken away by council members. And while we're talking about outrage, let's talk about how government is spending too much. Why would part-time council members be given lifetime health care for themselves and their family? This is what Mrs. Irwin voted for. She gave herself, did not recuse herself, lifetime health care benefits. Now, when I'm done talking, or later in the evening in the city manager report, Mrs. Irwin will have Mr. Mittnick do damage control. The facts are that this is an election year. Mrs. Irwin is running. No, she is not taking the full benefits this year, but she has the right to take it and give it to her family every single year for her lifetime. And she gave herself this benefit. Mr. Mittnick, by the way, is compensated very well by the city council. He makes more than the chief justice of the Supreme Court or the president of the United States. Not the president, the vice president of the United States, which is outrageous. In November, we have the right to vote. We have the power. It's really important to have a clean sweep and vote out all the incumbents, especially incumbents that take away your right to vote, that give money to billionaires like Caruso for 10 parking spots when there's an empty lot in the back, the automall to impose a sign that you don't want. You have the right to vote. Please use that right in November. There's soldiers that go to other countries that risk their lives so that people can have a right to vote. We should have it here. We should have democracy in the city, but it was taken away from us. And the power of the people, 10,421 signatures, and it's just beginning. We need a different government. We need to be represented by good people that are there for the common good, not their own good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Our next speaker is J.C. Simmons. Good evening, Mr. Simmons.
Good evening, city council and the city of Thousand Oaks. J.C. Simmons, longtime resident. As you know, avid cyclist. This is not my first time here. And I came to thank the council, thank the city for your strong support of our Ride of Silence, our fifth annual. I am the person that originally brought the Ride of Silence to Thousand Oaks. It's an international event. It happens all over the world. There were 320 cities this year. They rode in silence for 10 miles in honor of those that have been killed on the roads by motor vehicles. We had over 200 people in Thousand Oaks. We had strong support from Chief Pettis and the Thousand Oaks Police, Billy William Hutton, the Bike Patrol leader. We had an orderly procession, and we're trying to get the attention of the city that these are our roads, too. One of my mottos is same roads. We ride by the same rules. We have the same rights. These are our roads, too. Following up on that, over 600 people in the United States are killed every year. 600 bicyclists are killed every year on our roads by motor vehicles. There's been 27 in Southern California. Just Friday night, a fellow was killed in North Hills. Hit from behind while he rode on Nordoff. Helmet, bright green jersey. Guy ran into him, and then he was hit and run. We don't know whether he was texting on his phone, intoxicated, what was going on. But another fatality. It's a great sport. It's a great asset for the city. I also wanted to point out to the city that Cycling Magazine recognized Thousand Oaks as a great place to ride, number 38 on the list of top 50 cities. And Sunset Magazine recognized it as a great burb to ride in the June issue. If you need some reading, great little articles following up. I want to thank the city council for their strong support of Lynn Road and cycling. We're moving Thousand Oaks from bicycle-friendly bronze towards bicycle-friendly silver. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Our next speaker is Andy Levine.
Andy Levine, Newbury Park, California. Thank you, mayor and the city council. I know the transportation is going to be going up to $3 for the dollar ride, but the thing about that is, too, is it shouldn't be going up so much. It should only go up like 25 cents. I know what other cities are doing, are having to go up, but this is going to go into the people that have, they're in a limited budget. So next time you have this, please make sure you don't go up by so much, because this is going to impact the riders. People are going to be taking the dollar ride less when it's going to go up to $3, and people still have to get to work. So the next time this comes up, please don't go, don't make the fares go sky high. I did talk to somebody, I do understand, but next time you do this, please don't go so high, because, I mean, people are limited. People that are taken on social security, that are disabled, that are seniors, and they already have those that are going up, too. So that's all I want to say, and you guys have a nice night.
Thank you, Mr. Levine, for coming this evening. Our next speaker is Sharon Monroe.
Sharon Moret, Newbury Park. Regarding the transportation issue that someone just spoke of, that is a very expensive trip for someone with limited income. And if they're trying to fit in the community because they're handicapped, et cetera, and can only work a few hours at a time, it keeps them in touch with the community. But when the expense is, you know, $6, it becomes a question as to whether they should even work, you know, if they're trying to do that or even going to the doctor's office. But if they're close by home, and they're maybe about five minutes from home, there should be something regarding distance and charge, because $6 may not be high for some people, but it's high for a lot of people. And then the other thing that I wanted to comment on was, we saw many fine athletes tonight, and where is our bowling alley? And basically, we really need that. I know that our former councilman, Dennis Gillette, had said that he would like to see a family recreation center. And so we've been waiting for a bowling alley, but I just wonder, I know that the city is doing the arts center, and they have taken a building that was supposed to be commercial and changed it for the arts center. Let us do something, setting aside money every year, so that we can have something like that come into fruition.
Ms. Moret, at the end of public comments, the city manager will address you. And our last speaker is Mr. Kidway.
I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful, naked, balked by, resident of Newbury Park, director of concerned citizens of Thousand Oaks. A big sacrifice to be here today. The heat is winning 37-26, and I guess I'll miss the whole game. It's the second quarter right now. If TO TV can help me, I don't know what's going on with that. Okay, that's... I'm showing my old 30% cut proposal. It's not going anywhere. I'm looking, maybe some council people in the election would come forward. And right now, there's a big uproar in Oxnard, in that the interim city manager is getting 20% salary increase to $220,000. In my opinion, and the opinion of most taxpayers, no city or county employee, except maybe a physician or chief of police, should get more than the governor of, which is $173,000. And we need to run on this platform and cut the outrageous pensions. The CHP is getting one day furlough, but it's going to be put to their pension, and they can still retire at 55, I mean, at 95%. If TO TV can show that, we just concluded an election that is a sign up until yesterday on the back of the home on Lynn Road. I mean, the people who support this gentle lady talk about signs that should not be allowed for businesses, and how Lynn Road is such a scenic highway. And that sign has not even been taken off. Maybe it is taken off today, and in the back of a home. Again, I implore, I mean, the gentle lady talked about signatures to have an election, but no one on the council, including the minority, used their quota of one item to suggest an item on the agenda, that we should have an election. You have the right, so people would have come out. We would not have to go through the vote process. My time is running out, so I hope TO TV will show this. This is from Simi Valley. I mean, we are losing everything to Simi Valley nowadays. It's unbelievable. This is on their website, the detail of every council member. This is what we need, and I want to see who will be the champion of the people that will put it there, so that there's no miscreant. It's line by line, and everybody has it. I don't know why this city refuses to be open and welcoming to citizens. You are losing out on the redevelopment, and I'll talk about it more, but the city does not seem to learn. The redevelopment hearing should be televised. Why are they not televised, mayor? The TV is there.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Next, we have the consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Mittnick is going to make comments.
Madam mayor, members of the council, the first speaker talked about a proposed Holocaust survivor memorial, and we are happy to continue to work with her, as well as a rabbi writer from one of the local synagogues. There are different options. For example, the existing city opportunities, if you will, or options include, like adopt a note, tree programs, bench donations, and things like that. We're willing to further explore those possibilities. There are also possibilities with the Canal Rec and Park District, nonprofits, and that type of thing, to go to a more involved process that would involve fundraising, finding a location. So we're willing to work with the rabbi, and in this case, the Jewish community, and Mrs. Drobbin, to explore possibilities. It's not as simple as just, oh, that's a good spot over there, let's go put something there. We have to work through a whole series of concerns and issues. And for this type of issue, we'd want to make sure we're being sensitive to other Holocaust memorial, or other Holocaust museums, and the Jewish community, and to make sure we're crossing all of our Ts, dotting all of our Is. So we'll continue to work with her and the rabbi and other interested parties, and perhaps Mr. Silverman and members of the applicable nonprofit groups. We heard a speaker talk about a bowling alley, and as a reminder, the redevelopment agency in the Newbury Road project area, we had a lot of funds set aside to work on the acquisition and improvement of the Kelly Road, or the continuation school, and the school district's bus maintenance facility and storage. Mrs. Drolban, to explore possibilities. It's not as simple as just, oh, that's a good spot over there. Let's go put something there. We have to work through a whole series of concerns and issues. And for this type of issue, we'd want to make sure we're being sensitive to other Holocaust memorial or other Holocaust museums and the Jewish community, and to make sure we're crossing all of our Ts, dotting all of our Is. So we'll continue to work with her and the rabbi and other interested parties, and perhaps Mr. Silverman and members of the applicable nonprofit groups. We heard a speaker talk about a bowling alley and as a reminder, the redevelopment agency in the Newbury Road project area, we had a lot of funds set aside to work on the acquisition and improvement of the Kelly Road or the Continuation School and the school district's bus maintenance facility and storage yard on Kelly Road in Newbury Park. The goal there was to bring a family and entertainment recreational use onto that site. Unfortunately, the state of California has come in and is in the process of confiscating the millions of dollars that we had built up over the years to do this project and ultimately build a bowling alley and other recreational uses there. So we're going to have to explore other options to make that a reality. There is the possibility of litigation over that to save those bond proceeds to make that happen. So we'll be happy to keep that resonant up to speed on that issue. And then with respect to the transit issue, the dial ride services, and yes, the council will recall about a year ago, I believe there was a hearing on that, and rates increased last year, and they're going up again this year to $3. And we have to do that as a municipality running a dial ride system to fully comply with the federal regulations and rules in order for us to receive the state funding that we do. For dial ride users, 90% of the cost is subsidized by the government, and so 10% has to come from the riders. Those aren't our rules. That's the federal rules, and so we need to comply with that. And if we fall out of compliance, then there are penalties and so on. So while it's $3, the cost of that ride is about $30, sometimes more, and it's heavily subsidized. So that's why those rates went up. And then for next year, if we have to raise them again to comply with the 10% recovery, we'll be sure to work with the riders and make them aware. Madam Mayor, I believe that's it.
Pro Tem, Bill Delapena.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly, if I may, address Mr. Kidway's concern regarding an ordinance for appointment. And it is my understanding that there was an opportunity to adopt an ordinance that would have allowed for appointment until the next election, which was denied in March. Just wanted to let you know that.
All right, we are on the consent calendar. 7G has been pulled. Anything else? Councilmember Bill Delapena.
Item 7L, please.
Councilmember Price.
7C.
All right. Want to move the rest of the consent calendar?
Sure. Madam.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you for reminding me, Ms. Lawrence. Mr. Kidway, again, apologize.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin. Besides not remembering people, the other thing that other mayors have done is to give two names out so that we know who's coming up. It helps me because I get nervous. This way, I know when my turn is coming, and this was started 20 years ago. On the issues, I generally believe in the lowest bidder getting the job, but not all the time. And regarding the audio mixing console, that is agenda item number C, I believe, there's a $3,000 saving from the company that's down the hill in Camarillo versus getting someone in Las Vegas, and it's a $56,000 purchase. And I called them up. I went on their website. I went on this on the last moment, and their motto is work with people who know how to get the things done. I mean, it looks like a great company, you know, down the street. You might not get the sales tax, but the service will be great. I would like to talk about the redevelopment agency item. Unfortunately, it's sad that it is presented in an erroneous manner because it says undergrounding electricity lines, and then it says $200,000. This is not about $200,000. It's about $13 million. And this is... If TO TV can show the overhead, that's the letter from the state that was written on the 25th to the city. It has been denied twice, this item. And I've had to waste a morning and other time with staff because they said that they have a bond that is for this project. There ain't any bond, and the auditors proved me right, and it's disgusting that the city is trying to waste taxpayer dollars on something that is a no-brainer. You have appointed, or Linda Parks has appointed somebody on the board as a public member that doesn't know anything about it. He said so in the paper that he doesn't know the ropes. And he and Jeff Barstätt said, well, we'll throw things there, and we'll hope that they stick. This ain't the way this country works. I mean, this is a nation of rules and laws and order, and it's very sad, the city manager is not here, how he, in the paper, puts down the state. This money is being, going to be used for students, for community colleges, the courts, Simi Valley courthouse will be part-time now to make sure that the courts operate properly and not to go to people like Caruso so that they get rent for a dollar a year. And then the city council lets the people that represent them attack citizens for saying that we are spreading misinformation when we are saying the truth, and the taxpayers are being screwed. Thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. Kidway, just for your information, item 7G, the undergrounding item, was pulled.
Okay. I apologize, but I came late.
All right. Motion, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move the balance of the consent calendar.
Vote, please.
Motion carries 3-0.
Mr. Price, I think you were 7C.
Yes, thank you. Just a small question that I had in regards to the trade-in amount on, I noticed it in 7D, although it was a much larger purchase for the digital radio communications equipment. There was a trade-in amount listed there. And in 7C, for the digital mixer, there was none. And I'm just wondering whether or not that equipment is so old that it doesn't have any trade-in value or whether it is something that the city stands to resell and perhaps reduce the cost.
Councilman, we did, in fact, looked into the, look into the trade-in value of our old equipment and did, in fact, find that it was antiquated to the point where there was very little value to anyone else in that business, in our business. And we are also taking, consequently, we're taking the opportunity to integrate the equipment that's being replaced into some of our other audio systems and help defray the cost of rental of additional equipment that we've been looking at over the course of the past several years.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Would you like to move the item?
Yeah, I would move item 7C.
Vote, please.
Motion carries 3-0.
Mayor Pro Tem, Bill Delapena, item 7L.
Thank you. In reference to the previous item, maybe we can donate it to a technology museum. Anyhow, item 7L deals with the improvements for the Newbury Park library, and I just wanted to find out whether the improvements that were approved by the council, separate from the solar panels, which has been canceled, will still go forward and when, what's the timeframe for those improvements to be completed?
Good evening, council. Well, as you can see from the staff report, the bids went out for the parking lot landscaping, and they came in a little higher than we expected, $200,000 over. So rather than asking for budget at this time, we're going to go back, reject all bids, and relook at the project and decide whether we want to take some of the elements out. If you recall, there were some sustainable items we added, pervious paving, water tanks for rainwater storage that most likely were the additional items that made it go a little high. So we're going to take it back to the council subcommittee, relook at the project, make some decisions on taking stuff in or out in the next couple of months. And so you'll see it come back. We're going to move forward. Any of the critical parking lot issues are being taken care of as we go, so you'll probably see it back in the fall before the council.
Okay, so the fact that it had been previously approved by the council does not factor in this one at all?
Well, we would be have to, we would have to come back for more additional budget, and we just wanted to relook at the project a little closer before we brought that extra budget appropriation back.
Okay, so we are on record as saying that by the fall?
That's what our goal is, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll move, I mean, approval of item L.
Vote, please.
Motion carries 3-0.
Here we are on a public hearing, item 8A, and can I have the city clerk please open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8A, annual collection of delinquent wastewater service charges, property tax roll. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have no cards.
Ms. Hurtado is going to be doing the report tonight. She's the interim revenue operations manager. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin and council members. The report before you outlines the city's routine practice to ensure the payment of delinquent wastewater service charges on active accounts by attaching a special assessment to the property owner's annual property tax bill. During the year, wastewater account holders are notified about their delinquent balance via billing reminder notices. Annually, letters are sent at the beginning of April notifying them of the city's intent to place a lien on the property if the delinquent amount remains unpaid. Leans are placed on the parcel for amounts that are 120 days past due in April of each year, and subsequent letters are sent to inform the property owner that the city intends to attach the past due amount to the property tax rolls. To put this into context, when finance started the process at the beginning of April this year, we identified 743 wastewater accounts with delinquent amounts totaling over $137,000. During the subsequent weeks, some customers responded to the notices and paid. When leans were placed mid-April, 438 leans were placed totaling approximately $95,000. Customers continued to pay, bringing the amount subject to attachment today to 251 accounts totaling approximately $63,000. This is a very small number of accounts to be attached compared to the 37,800 total connections. It's about seven tenths of 1%, less than 1%. Staff recommends that council adopt the resolution and approve the list of names, parcel numbers, and amounts that will be submitted to the county tax collector for inclusion on the property tax bills. The staff is available for questions.
Do we have questions? Ms. Bill Delapena?
I don't have questions, but if there are no comments, I'm ready to move recommendation of this, I mean, approval of this recommendation.
Okay.
This one requires two-thirds.
Okay, any comments on, comments on the motion? Vote, please.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. We are now going to open public hearing, item 8B, municipal code amendment regarding massage establishments. And can I have the city clerk please open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8B, municipal code amendment regarding massage establishments, massage technicians, and practice of massage. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have one person who has presented a speaker card, and pursuant to council standards, the speaker will be allowed five minutes.
Ms. Hurtado is going to be presenting the report again.
Thank you once again, Mayor Irwin and council members. I am back to discuss another topic, a proposed ordinance for massage technician and massage establishment regulations. So I'll be presenting again. I'm Melissa Hurtado, interim revenue operations manager in the finance department. And I also have Sergeant Romano Bossi with the Thousand Oaks Police Department, and Patrick He, her assistant city attorney, who will also be available for questions. Most industries are regulated by a state agency, such as the cosmetology board for hairstylists or the medical board for doctors, but there was not such a state agency to regulate the massage industry. Cities were required to determine the qualifications they felt were necessary to become a massage technician or establishment owner. Thousand Oaks has regulated massage with an ordinance first being adopted in 1978 and has revised the ordinance a couple of times over the years, with the last revision in 2006. Throughout the state, massage technicians complained about the various regulations that were unique to each city. Our city ordinance requires a background check and 500 hours of education. Once qualified, the massage technician is issued an ID badge. Senate Bill 731 was passed in 2009, which established the California Massage Therapy Council, or CAMTC for short. CAMTC is a nonprofit organization whose board consists of members with various interests in massage regulation, including a member from the California League of Cities. The law established a voluntary certification process for massage technicians and was amended in 2011 with Assembly Bill 619 to include restrictions on regulating massage establishments. So the city's ordinance needs to be amended to comply with the state law. The state law allows massage technicians to get one regulatory permit from the CAMTC rather than going to each city for a regulatory permit. The law prohibits cities from requiring a regulatory permit from CAMTC-certified technicians. Cities can still collect business tax when applicable. When the original law was passed in 2009, establishments weren't really addressed. But when the law was amended last year, it included language that impacted the way cities can regulate the establishments that employ only CAMTC-certified technicians. First, cities cannot impose any type of use permit, zoning restrictions, moratoria, et cetera, that is not also required for all other professional businesses in the city. So for example, if we wanted to place restrictions on how many establishments we allow or where we allow them, these restrictions would also have to apply to lawyers, accountants, chiropractors, and so on. Second, our current ordinance requires a regulatory permit for establishments. The law, as it was amended in 2011, specifically states that cities cannot require a permit from establishments that only use CAMTC-certified technicians. Cities are allowed to require a background check for anyone who owns more than 5% of an establishment and who was not themselves CAMTC-certified. So taking all that information into account, staff considered two options. The first is to require certification for all massage technicians and require background checks for uncertified establishment owners. The second option is to create a hybrid approach with two sets of regulations, one for certified technicians and owners and the other for uncertified technicians and owners. Staff recommends option number one, require all massage technicians to obtain CAMTC certification and require background checks for uncertified establishment owners. We took a look at what other cities were doing and found that all of the other larger cities in Ventura County are already requiring certification. This includes Camarillo, Oxnard, Simi Valley, and Ventura. In 2010, Thousand Oaks had almost 200 massage technicians with city massage permits. In 2012, this number is down to only 31. In comparison, staff searched the CAMTC website for certified technicians who listed an employer in either Thousand Oaks, Newbury Park, or Westlake Village. There were 227 certified technicians who met that criteria. When the law was originally passed in 2009, staff was hesitant to propose an ordinance requiring certification, partially because we were unsure of how successful the CAMTC would be. But to date, they have issued over 32,000 certifications throughout California. CAMTC certification benefits massage technicians by allowing them to work anywhere in the state without the need for a regulatory permit in each city. Thousand Oaks Police Department has been working closely with CAMTC and will continue to do so in order to suspend or revoke certifications as appropriate. Similar to the city's permit process, applicants for CAMTC certification undergo a background check utilizing information from both the state DOJ and the FBI. Their education is validated, and the applicant is issued an ID badge once approved. When considering our options, staff found that a hybrid approach would be ineffective. First, it causes confusion for all parties involved. Since the inception of CAMTC, staff has been providing exemptions to the CAMTC technicians, but trying to keep track of who needs what type of licensing in each unique scenario has been difficult, and problems counter-ize from this. Second, only about 15% of massage technicians are not currently certified. And last, a hybrid approach would not be consistent with other local cities. In writing the proposed ordinance, staff was careful to maximize the control that the state has left to the cities. the state has left to the cities by including health and safety requirements and to allow city staff and police officials the authority to inspect for compliance with both state and city requirements. The proposed ordinance provides a transition period for existing city permitted technicians, giving them until the first of the year to become certified. Basically, the CAMTC will be performing the background check and education validation that the city would do to issue a regulatory permit. A registration process for massage establishments is included as part of the ordinance. The registration process would require establishment owners to furnish copies of their employees' certifications, which would allow the city to maintain a clear record of who is working in the city. The registration process also ensures that background checks are performed accordingly. Staff began performing outreach to existing massage therapists and establishment owners in November of last year. We sent a letter explaining the need for a change to the ordinance and that the proposed ordinance would require CAMTC certification. We included information about the CAMTC and how to become certified. A survey was also included to provide staff with an understanding of who was intending to become certified. Of the 66 who responded, 23 had already become certified. Only five respondents were not intending to become certified. In addition, staff recognized that the costs associated with applying for CAMTC certification could be a financial burden, especially when they had to maintain their city permits during the CAMTC review process. So in order to encourage certification and keep those costs down, staff provided a grace period to any existing massage technician who applied with CAMTC by December 31, 2011. They were allowed to work with their 2011 permit for the first three months of 2012 to allow for processing time. Another letter was sent out a couple of weeks ago to advise of this public hearing and give them the opportunity to speak with me and ask any questions or advise me of any concerns. If the ordinance is adopted, another letter will be sent to explain the changes and offer our assistance with applying for CAMTC certification. And staff is available for questions.
Do we have questions, staff? Ms. Bill Della Pena?
Thank you very much for this presentation. My question is really directed at police, and we have Chief Pentis here tonight, and perhaps, I don't know if Sergeant Bossi would like to answer as well, but with the proposal that we have here tonight, do we, how do you think will this ordinance, if it is approved tonight, affect your investigations and your police work?
It essentially would make things a lot easier for us. There would be a consistency across the board. CAMTC has a website that we can access on our smartphones, so if we go do one of our spot inspections at one of the massage parlors and they don't have their ID with them, we can run them by their name on the CAMTC website and see if they really do have a license and see the photograph attached to the license, so it essentially makes it a lot easier for us.
Now, we've all received complaints, numerous complaints, about certain massage establishments in Thousand Oaks, and I'm just wondering, is our police or even the state, will they be able to confirm that the certification is coming from an accredited institution? And how will you actually be able to verify that?
CAMTC right now has a list of schools that they consider suspicious, and the current licensing process, we work with them to see which of these schools our applicants may be part of. So when it comes through the process, it is now for a technician permit, the first thing we do is go to the CAMTC website and see if the school is on that list. So if it goes strictly to CAMTC, it'd be a lot easier and would limit the application process, so we would essentially be screening out problems before they even start because it'll be caught at the licensing process. And as far as our typical duties, our inspections that we do, the cops unit and the bike team, we do both uniformed and ununiform undercover type spot checks along the massage parlors on Teal Boulevard and in Newbury Park, and we check for licensing status, make sure everybody's licensed as they're supposed to be.
Thank you.
We have one public speaker, Mr. Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor. Nick Kidway, resident Newbury Park director, concerned citizens in Thousand Oaks, and have been talking about Thousand Oaks Boulevard being made into Massage Parlor Boulevard. And so I'm glad that even though my queries during public comments were ignored, but at least this has been brought as a public hearing, and disappointed that there is no public outcry and input here, which it should be. I guess it is because, partially because of the heat, winning 54 to 47 at halftime, so half the game is gone. I don't know why people didn't come. I did some Google hits, and I got two stories, and I faxed them in the morning, but sometimes too much technology is not that good, too, and I guess now the faxes don't come to the city clerk's department, they go somewhere else, and so you will get to read it tomorrow in your council mail maybe, and I couldn't bring the copies myself, I forgot them at work. But basically, you folks are basically boiling it down to the state certification, but what is needed is a more better enforcement method that gives the tools to the police so that they can make the surprise visits, et cetera. And how you do that within the legal parameters, that is for the city attorney to craft the ordinance, and I'm disappointed that the city attorney is not here because our neighbor has again beat us. Mayor Huber had it on the agenda a few months back, and they, I don't know what the outcome was, I wrote to him on Friday, and to no surprise, he ignored me, so I never got an answer back from him on the email because I wanted to find out, and I was going to go on the website to see what the difference was. But I would like to say that about three months ago, there was a story that started about the massage parlor establishments, and a sergeant was quoted, and I was just completely shocked, and so many other people in the blog complained that, he said that actually the massage permits have gone down in Thousand Oaks. And maybe it is true, but maybe there used to be in office buildings, the Bank of America building on the third floor, so you did not know what was happening, but now they are just right in your face. And we seem to be getting a culture of that kind of activity with hooters right in the middle of the city. I happened to run into this manager of hooters, and he told me, not knowing me, but said that, "Well, next year, we're going to have the liquor permit, so let things calm down." And it's just disgusting what these people want to do, and I hear that Rhino will come prancing in next year, too, so I don't know what the people are going to do. I mean, how we can stop it? It will be just like the good old San Fernando Valley. I'm sorry for that the Boy Scouts have to hear this story. Boy Scout Troop Number 799, welcome. What we are concerned about is how do you stop the happy endings? I mean, that's, I mean, some people want them, but there's law and order in this country. I mean, and I'm glad that we have a law enforcement officer sitting on the dais, maybe he can use his expertise and advise the staff to craft an ordinance that will protect the citizens from these kind of places. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Do we have questions, staff? Councilmember Bill Della Pena?
Thank you. Perhaps this ordinance that is before us tonight may become still a work in progress, and it may need some tweaking later on down the road, but I was just wondering, this ordinance does not prohibit police from still continuing to conduct stings, undercover stings, under operations, other operations, is that correct?
Correct. There is no restriction on our inspections and operations. It's essentially the same as it is now. We have the freedom to go in and inspect these businesses.
Thank you.
Councilmember Price?
No, I don't really have any questions. I'm prepared to move.
All right, I just have to close the public hearing, and now you can move.
Thank you. I would move staff's recommendation and say that I think that what this ordinance will do is simply give law enforcement the ability to, and also give the businesses, the idea that law enforcement is going to be looking at them a little bit more closely and might assuage some of the fears that some of the residents have about these businesses, and quite frankly, I don't think that a lot of these will be around. As the economy improves, I think that you'll see that a number of these shops close up as rents increase, so that'll be very interesting. And with that, I would move staff's recommendation.
Discussion on the recommendation? No? Vote, please.
The motion carries three zero, and the ordinance title is an ordinance amending municipal code, repealing in entirety Title V, Chapter 17, and adding Title V, Chapter 17, adopting licensing and operating regulations for massage establishments, massage technicians, and practice of massage.
Thank you. We are going to skip over to item 14A, the closed session, and we're going to have Mr. Norman announce it, take a short break while we go into closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel will convene in closed session for a conference with labor negotiators. The city designated representatives are City Manager Scott Mitnick, Assistant City Manager Mark Watkins, Finance Director John Adams, and Human Resources Director Gary Rogers. The employee organizations are the Thousand Oaks City Employees Association, Senior Management Association, Thousand Oaks Management Association, and Executive Managers pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Also for conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, 1200 Newbury LLC versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number 56-2009-00337441-CU-WM-VTA pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. Thank you.
Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was no reportable action out of closed session. Thank you.
All right. I apologize for the delay. We are on Department Reports, 9A, extension of exclusive refuse recycling and street sweeping franchise agreements, and Mr. Spurgeon, our Public Works Director, will be giving the report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is for consideration of extending the three existing solid waste franchise agreements that we have. With me on the dais tonight, Joanne Kelly, our Resource Division Manager, and John Brooks, and Chris Ball, who both manage our solid waste programs here at the city. The city, when it was first incorporated, had no franchise agreements, no agreements at all directly with haulers, and there were several, there were a number of haulers. There was no service standards, there were no set areas that these haulers provided, and by about 1972, city council realized that, you know, we need some order to our trash collection services. And so, an ordinance was adopted at that time, and the intent of the ordinance included the need to control standards, both for rates, services, safety, control how environmental problems caused by trash and refuse would be handled, as well as just preventing overuse of our streets, because in some cases, there were several haulers that were serving the same neighborhoods, so you would have a number of trucks running down city streets on different days of the week. So the following year, 1973, the city entered into the first agreements with six disposal companies at the time. Now, over the course of a number of years, these companies consolidated, one buying another, and so forth, until about 1999, when we ended up with the two haulers that we have today, Waste Management and Newbury Disposal. At that time, the city required a franchise transfer fee from Waste Management, 1.4 million. I wanted to point this out because a million of that went to Open Space Acquisition Fund, and the other 400,000 went to the Community Enhancement Fund, which continues to fund our enhancement grants that communities, organizations throughout the city use to beautify the city and do environmental programs. Excuse me. It's important to maybe pause and just note that franchise agreements are different than public works contracts. Clearly, we let contracts, we bid contracts for many of our services and projects, all of our capital construction, many millions of dollars. State law requires us to award to the lowest responsible bidders for those kinds of contracts and for many services. But state law also allows for franchise agreements, which in many cases are for various public services. We have a number of franchise agreements, electricity, natural gas, water, telecommunications. And these are different than the public works contracts. The franchise agreements we have in place for our solid waste services establish the service zones of the various haulers and all the standards for service and rates. The city does not directly pay the haulers to provide the service, they bill our residents directly. And franchise, the franchise agreements require fees be paid to the general fund and to help fund our solid waste management program. In 1989, the state enacted AB 939, which really changed the way solid waste services were provided statewide. This started our recycling, it's where the 50% waste had to be diverted by the year 2000, that came about at that time. That, just by way of note, was changed earlier this year by AB 341. We now have a 75% diversion rate that's going to be required. Currently, the city is at about 70% diversion, so we're doing really well and well on our way for the new bill. But in response to that, to AB 939, the city council approved or adopted a new solid waste ordinance, which included all the requirements for recycling that was in that bill, and then in '94 approved agreements, renegotiated agreements with our two waste haulers to include all those requirements, including the recycling diversion rates. We've been recycling, of course, in the city for almost, well over two decades, both curbside recycling and green waste, and two years ago, street sweeping was included in the contracts for savings of about $600,000 per year to the general fund. That was significant. And we also increased the franchise fees at that time to 8%, and we are now the highest in our county and surrounding area in terms of franchise fees. So we have three agreements, two for residential, one with waste management, they do about 70% of the city residential trash collection, and then Newbury Disposal, which is a Harrison company, does the remainder. Those two agreements expire in 2018. Commercial is all done for the whole city by waste management, and that expires in 2015. The agreements provide for extension points every three years. That's why we're here tonight, because we have one coming up, and the agreements provide for options. One option is to take no action, and the agreements will automatically extend three more years with no changes to the existing agreement terms. The second option is to terminate the contracts, let them run out to their current expiration dates, which would be 2015 for commercial, 2018 for residential, and for that, we just need to notify the haulers. If that were the action taken, we would, of course, need to If that were the action taken, we would, of course, need to proceed with a request for proposals to either replace the haulers or negotiate new agreements prior to those expiration dates. The third agreement, which is staff's recommendation, is to extend all three contracts for an additional three years, but including a number of additional services in the contracts as well as rate We've been fortunate to have excellent service provided by our two waste haulers. This is not by accident. I think that the commitment of our staff over the years, working on getting those services to an excellent level has, is why we are where we are. But it's not just the two haulers. We've been, over the years, working on collaborative relationships with recycling companies. That provides us the opportunity to have such high diversion rates, and these companies include Gold Coast Recycling in Ventura, Simi Valley Recycling, and then Agriman, which is where our green waste goes and gets recycled, and they have facilities in Oxnard where they produce soil amendment. All of the city's trash goes to the Simi Valley landfill. We do actually receive an additional funding stream through a separate agreement, it's not part of these agreements, but just of note, that's about $260,000 a year additional revenue to our solid waste fund. Excuse me. So, we're very, very committed to environmental programs here at the city. That starts with you at the city council level. And this requires, though, a substantial commitment of time and money to come up with the innovative partnerships that we, we have developed over these years. The city is an industry leader. In fact, just recently, staff from CalRecycle, which is the state agency that oversees recycling, they visited us here because they wanted to see what we were going to do with the new commercial recycling program, and use what we're planning to do as a model for other cities throughout the state. So, a testament to how, really how forward-thinking we are, and these really are, are because of the local partnerships that we've established, not only with our two haulers, but again, with the recycling companies and the cities throughout the county. Having these long-term relationships allows for some certainty, and the haulers can then invest fairly significant amounts of money to continue with our, with our recycling programs. For instance, Waste Management is planning to build a $50 million state-of-the-art materials recovery facility, the Simi Valley landfill. Agriman will be spending over $2 million to expand their green waste recycling facility down in Oxnard. These are things that require some certainty on their part, that they know that there's going to be the need for, for these services by cities in the county, including Thousand Oaks. We have a food waste diversion program that's, that's going on, and again, Waste Management has invested in new CNG trash trucks, replacing some of their old diesels. Again, this is a reflection of a certainty from our long-term relationships that we've had. I also want to just bring up the 2009 Community Attitude Survey, because in it, 97% of our residents indicated they were satisfied, and actually 74% extremely satisfied, with our solid waste and recycling services. And we are very proud of these statistics. I think this, again, reflects the, the efforts by both staff and the haulers. This isn't, again, again, this is not by accident. So, our residential franchise agreements, staff recommends extending the agreements for three years and including rate considerations that we did negotiate with the two haulers, and additional program enhancements. The rate considerations here are basically the current rates, the current residential rate of 2905 would be frozen for the next two years, so there'd be three years at the same rate. And then, in 2015, the increase would only be half of what's allowed in the contract. So, contracts allow, allows for basically CPI increases, and so we would have zero, zero, and then one-half of what's allowed. What that results in, over, through the end of the current contract, the contract time of 2018, over $3.4 million of savings to our residents through those rate considerations, and that's just those. That wouldn't include any future considerations we might get for, for additional extensions. Program enhancements on the residential side would include free hazardous materials drop-offs at recycling centers, organics feasibility study for residential recycling, and then mailing of city newsletters by the haulers, saving us a few more dollars in our program. Here, we have the comparison of residential rates for, within the county and some surrounding areas out to Calabasas and Agoura. We are not the highest, as you can see highlighted there, Thousand Oaks at 2905. We're not the lowest either. With the rate freezes, if we were to do this comparison again in two or three years, we would be lower in this comparison, because other agencies would have been increasing their rates. We would be frozen for the, for the next three years. And again, I think the community survey would have reflected residents dissatisfaction with rates if they felt they were too high, but we don't think that's the case. The commercial franchise agreements, again, our recommendation is to extend these for three more years and include provisions for mandatory commercial recycling, which was enacted by the state earlier this year, and includes some additional program enhancements. The mandatory recycling by AB 341 requires now all businesses, larger businesses essentially, and multifamily apartments and condo projects to begin recycling. Currently, that is only voluntary, so this makes it mandatory. There's a compliance date that we begin implementation of that, which is only, which is just July 1, and the proposed revised agreements include all the provisions of this bill. And in fact, Waste Management has already started meeting with individual businesses to start rolling out this program. Also, the multifamily residents will have the ability to have a, for a free bulky item pickup, one per year, just like the single-family residents have currently, so that's another Also, on the commercial, part of the commercial agreement, the Waste Management would implement...
Spurgeon?
Yes?
We're having, Ms. Bill Delopina is having a little trouble hearing you, so can you move a little closer to the mic?
Oh, my apologies.
Did you want to start over?
This item tonight, council, is on the commercial resi... Okay, my apologies. So, we're on slide 20. Okay. The commercial franchise agreements also include some additional provisions, including commercial organics and food waste collection service. This is an additional area of recycling that we have not fully implemented in the past. And then also free green waste recycling that, for, for waste that's generated by our municipal service center crews, saving us a few more dollars, about $16,000 per year to the general fund. Our commercial solid waste rates are compared here with the same agencies, again, in the county and just a few surrounding, out of the county, Agoura, Calabasas, et cetera. Again, we're not the highest. And so, our recommendation, as mentioned earlier, is to approve a resolution that does allow for a three-year extension for all three of the franchise agreements, including the various rate considerations and additional program enhancements. We have a number of kind of backup slides, supplemental slides, that we can go to in answering questions, but I think at this point, I'll stop and, and open it up for questions. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, Bill Delopina?
Yes, I do have questions, and we do have speakers, I would imagine, on this one as well, right? Saving $3.4 million is quite, is quite a bit of money, and obviously, there has been some interest outside from other competitors to want to have a chance at, at bidding, and, but do you feel that the benefits from Waste Management override the, the bidding process to see what others have to offer? And by the way, I think I'm the only council member who has not met with the competitor, I think, who is here tonight.
You know, that's a question that, frankly, I asked myself. You know, I'm fairly new as a public works director, and so I hadn't gone through one of these extensions before. So, clearly, that's a valid question. I mean, as, as I pointed out earlier, we, we do bid, or we do go out for proposals on many, many of our contracts, including some service contracts. Others, we don't, as, as I mentioned. I'm going to bring up a slide here. You know, we, in terms of staff's opinion on this, we believe that there's more advantages to staying, to extending the contract than disadvantages. So, this slide, what it does is for a request for proposals or going out to bid, there are advantages to that, clearly. You know, there's, there's a more open process than, than sole source negotiated contracts. That would be clearly an advantage. There is the potential for lower rates. You know, we can talk more about rates, and I think, I think we should do that, but low rates don't tell the whole story, and I think that's important to consider. And in fact, when you look at the rate comparisons, there are, there are agencies in the county that have significantly lower rates than us, you know, by, by, say, $10 a month, but, but there's a lot of drivers to rates, and so you have to really look carefully at that. We think that the disadvantages of going out to bid, we would lose the negotiated residential rate freeze. I mean, all, all of the enhancements and all of the negotiation, negotiated concessions that we've reached with the haulers, in exchange for three-year agreeing, extensions would, would be off the table. And the existing contracts would stay as they are if you did, if you were to cancel the contracts and then go out to bid before they expire in three or five years. So, that $3.4 million would be something that wouldn't be realized, that savings to our residents. That's, that's a big number, so, so you're right about that. And then, in discussion, and that's why I spent a little time talking about the partnerships that we've developed over time with the haulers and recyclers, right now, all our recycling is done in the county. Depending on who would win a request for proposal process, some of those recyclables might go out of the county. Is that a big deal? Well, maybe not, but, you know, I think in terms of, in terms of how we, you know, we pride ourselves in, in the environmental stewardship that we have here in the city and the county, I think that's, you know, that's an important consideration as well. So, maybe someday, we should go out to bid. We don't think now is the time. There's some regulatory, the regulatory environment with the state just passing AB 341, requiring 75% diversion, that's something that we're gonna, we're gonna need to work hard on, and it's going to take those, those partnerships. Now, could we establish those with a new hauler? Sure, but we've, we found that that takes time. Takes time to put the infrastructure in place, and so...
Well, thank you for, for answering that, but I do wonder, when we go out to bid, should we go out to bid? You know, we do have to compare apples to apples, and the competitor here, I don't think, according to the staff report, does not offer street sweeping, and how would we deal with that?
That is, that's a good point. That's one of the components of rates, that when, so when you do compare rates, whether it's between us and, say, Santa Paula, who, they are the lowest in, in the county, or if you start comparing to some of the LA Basin cities, they're even lower yet. One of the, one of the things you need to compare is, does it include street sweeping? We do, and Ventura does. None of the other agencies in the county include street sweeping. So, that's, when you just do a, a hard number-to-number comparison, you're right, you're not comparing apples to apples, per se. And, and there's a number of, a number of other factors, such as how close is the landfill, and what are the tipping fees at the landfill? And, you know, they, they're considerably different at even our own landfills here in the county. Tolan is probably 35% lower than Simi Valley. We have to send our trash to Simi Valley. Other agencies can go to Tolan, so their rates can be lower. And it's even more pronounced difference in the LA Basin in terms of landfill fees. So, so those are some of the, the considerations in, in just trying to compare dollars to dollars. When we, if we were to do an RFP, we would clearly need to look at service levels, qualifications of the haulers, their safety records, you know, on and on. We wouldn't just select on, on just cost, the lowest cost.
I would imagine you will continue to answer questions tonight. Could you please get a little bit closer to the microphone? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Jay, the, I think your staff report covered, the last time we negotiated, the franchise agreement was in 1994?
In its current state, yes.
Right. Because I know it was some time ago. I, I know it was on the council, but that was, I think, the first year I was elected, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, '94, yeah.
All right. So, from a historical perspective, and, you know, I think it's important the public recognizes that there's tremendous infrastructure investment on the part of, well, whoever's doing your service, that's why they look for these long-term contracts, because they make huge investments. I can remember back, moving to the environmentally, you know, the, the hybrid vehicles for emissions and, and all that stuff, and that was, that was a big investment. That being said, in comparison to other communities, how long do they go without doing a request for a proposal?
Within the county, and I think we'll try to bring up a slide here on that, within the county, there's only been two other, well, county and our area, two other agencies that have done a full RFP, yes. Santa Paula being one, and then Calabasas, I believe, on their, on their commercial side.
Ever?
That's, which slide is this? 26, I'm sorry. Yeah, so if you, if you look at this slide here, you can see that the only two that have actually done an RFP process ever in the county, well, and Calabasas is outside the county, but, is Santa Paula. So, all the other cities...
If council were to decide that, without, without certainly indicating any dissatisfaction of service, because I, I'll just put in the record right now, I've never got a complaint on a trash service, ever. So, we get great, great service, there's no doubt about that. That being said, if council wanted, for purposes of competition, for purposes of, in a transparent way, looking at, we are open to a competitive process, would that necessarily mean that the negotiated agreements that you're talking about tonight would automatically go away, as you have stated, or is that something that may happen?
I think the answer is, it may happen. We would have to ask the haulers if they would be willing to have the, the contracts canceled and expire.
And so, if we were to, as you would say, look at apples to apples, and I think Ms. Bill Delopina pointed out a couple of key items in terms of, like, services, is it fair to say that as a general rule, competition generally results in better service with
I think that it could.
I mean, the onus is on us, the onus is on staff to choose wisely, of course, but, and I think you point out, the fees are not the only thing. So, I'm, you know, great report, again, I'm going to say it again, I, I don't think there's any issue with the service that's been provided, and we haven't really negotiated anything since 1994, that seems like a long time. And it appears to me... And it appears to me that, at least until we get some more information, that a open competition would probably serve the city well. Probably not necessarily what our current contractor would want to hear, but it would seem to me that there would be no harm in that, in if they ended up being the best for the best price, they stick around.
I would note that every three-year extension that we've had since 1994 has been a negotiated process, and there have been concessions one way or another.
No, and I misspoke. Not so much a negotiation, but a bidding process.
Sure, sure.
Where there is really true competition.
Sure. You know what? I could mention the city of Santa Paula, which did just go through a bid process. The city was doing their own trash service in-house, so this was really an outsourced. They privatized that service. They are the lowest in the county currently at $20 a month. They have, they enjoy the lowest landfill rates at Tolan, and they can, they can haul very, very close to that, of course. That's, that's a big factor. But they have, say, a 5% franchise fee that they negotiated there. We have an 8%. Obviously, that drives our rates up. So all the components that we would, we would want to put into our RFP, you know, may end up with lower rates, but they may not. We may be right where we should be, based on all the services that we provide and the level of service that we want, as well as the level of funding for our general fund and our solid waste program. So we're, we're at the high end there, and, and we make good use of that money. I mean, we have a working program.
And in fairness, while I don't think council receives complaints on the service, and to be fair, I haven't received a lot of complaints about what it costs either. So that being said, I think council has an obligation to make sure that the residents are getting the best, best service at the best price. And to me, service comes before price when you're dealing with solid waste. You know, it, there are just so many things that are really good about the programs that we have. I think most folks in town want to make sure we're getting it right on the service end for a competitive price. Maybe not the best price, but a competitive price. So, yeah, to me, I think it's more of a fundamental, basic question, rather than going through and analyzing the different levels of service and all that. I think that's, that they do a great job. So, thanks.
I have a couple of things. First, I do want to mention that, and Mayor Protem Bill Delapena alluded to it, we did have ex parte communications with representatives of Crown. I also was fortunate a few weeks ago to be able to go for a tour of Agribin and look at the partnerships that were there. So I think besides looking at service and cost, it's very important also to look at the environmental programs. And I have to say, really, in Agribin is, it's incredible what they're doing out there. And we are really one of the leading counties in California, as far as going beyond just diversion, going to recycling, using the ag land that we have, having partnerships with the, with the different big companies, big ag producers out here. So it's a very impressive operation. That being said, still, you do see that for residential waste, you probably, Santa Paula's probably about, what, 30% lower? Agora Hills is maybe 20% lower. And that could, that, you know, might be significant for our residents. I mean, it is probably more significant than the negotiated rates that we have, the savings that we have over the next few years by, by keeping our agreements fresh. But what I want to know, okay, franchise agreements, franchise fees, we're at 8%. My understanding is, there's a lot of, there are a lot of cities in LA that are 12%, 14%. Is that correct? LA, not city?
Yeah, I think this is a apples-to-apples comparison question, because depending on what you include in the franchise fee, and I think that when you look at the agreements for other agencies, and what's, what's in, what's in the franchise fee, it's a lower number. But if you include a lot of the other costs, or a lot of the other revenues that, that are generated through these agreements, then those franchise, you know, then those percentages go up. Our numbers are actually closer, and they're probably well over 10 for residential and almost 15 for commercial, if you do include all that. And I'm talking about the, the solid waste program fees, which are in addition to the franchise fees. The franchise fees themselves, the 8% is, just goes to general fund revenue. But then on top of that, there's additional revenue that's generated through these agreements for funding our solid waste programs. And so, you know, we tried to do that, try to calculate that into, what is our total percentage, if you want to look at it that way? And so they're, they're more in line with what you, maybe you've been hearing, or what's been reported from some of those other cities in, in the LA Basin.
But the reality is, unless we really, at one point, and this would be seven years down the road, this is not, that's, if we don't, if we don't do the extension right now, we're talking about seven years down the road before we even look at putting it out to bid, right?
You're looking at 2015 is when the current commercial franchise agreement expires. So we would need to basically start now to go through the process, or certainly very soon, because that expires in 2015. The residential expires in 2018. Those two agreements, so we'd have a little more time.
Okay. Going to the, the California requirement for 50% diversion, and then moving to 75%, is, does the city get fined if we don't make those, if we don't make those numbers?
Mr. Brooks will answer that one.
In this particular case, the movement to 75%, the city's not liable for a fine like we were with the 25% and 50% mandate under AB 939. But we are liable for reporting what we're doing to move towards that policy goal.
And really, the only way to move toward it is with good partnerships. I mean, getting to 75% is, as a city, we can't do it without.
We definitely need assistance. It's not something we're gonna do on our own, or even with our current programs. We're gonna be developing additional programs. And in fact, we are working with the haulers right now, reaching out into the commercial sector.
So if this would go out for an RFP, or whatever it might, maybe it's not called an RFP, cost could not be the only factor. You would have to look at, you can't possibly just go with the lowest bidder. You would have to look at the environmental programs, how highly we, you know, how important it is that we reach our, the 75% diversion. I assume all those types of things you would be looking at, correct?
That is absolutely correct. Yes, service level would be very high on the list. And frankly, our, our RFP, our scope of work would include everything we've been talking about, in terms of like the, the commercial, the restaurant ag waste recycling and residential food waste recycling, all those things that were currently included in the contracts and working, working currently on, that would get us to the 75%. All those things would have to be in the scope of work for an RFP. So somebody would have to come in and duplicate everything that's been going on now, and maybe more.
And they would have to establish, I mean, would, would there be anybody that would even be able to do what Agribin does? I mean, wouldn't that relationship have to be established? And if it's only with the two haulers that we have, how would that work for somebody coming in from the outside?
Sure. And that would be a challenge, and I think that would take some time. And again, depending on who was the successful proposer, some of this material that's currently being recycled in our, in our county, might be going down to the LA Basin or beyond. I mean, there may be other, other recycling facilities that the successful hauler would, would be transporting that material to.
And is that something that you would consider also as a disadvantage, or not?
Yeah, we would need to consider those kind of factors. You know, that puts more trucks on our freeways, traveling farther. You know, there's, you know, there's intangibles like, you know, what's the carbon footprint impact of something like that? That, I think, you know, we as an agency, we're concerned with that. We're concerned about that, so.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have eight speakers, and our first speaker is Mike Smith. Mr. Smith will be followed by Terry Howard.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mike Smith. I'm the Director of Waste Management, Director of Operations here in town. I'd like to, first of all, thank the staff for a very detailed staff report. I mean, a lot of work went into that, a lot of history is there. Also like to thank the entire city council and past city councils for allowing us to be part of the infrastructure of this city for the last 40 years. You know, some of what I have to say is, has been covered actually by one of your reports here tonight, but you know what? When I think back about what our commitment's been to this community, I've said it up here before, and some of you folks weren't here at the time, but I started working at this company when it was Canal Valley Disposal in 1975. I told my parents it was just a summer job. 37 years ago, it's become a career. One that I'm very proud of, and I actually started my waste career in Thousand Oaks, on a collection truck. And my first stop I ever picked up was in the Racquet Club Villas. So I've watched this city grow. I've watched this city turn out to be the leader that it is, and I'm very proud to say that we've been part of that. I'd like to, you know, mention, you know, our partnership with the Harrison family. I know the Harrison family has worked in this community for the past 80 years. I've only been in the business 37. But what we've been able to accomplish for this community over the years, with the never-say-no attitude, whatever ever came up from the state, recycling, we were the first ones there. We were the first ones on the map in this community. When alternative fuel vehicles became the future and the way we thought it was gonna go, we stepped out and bought on the trucks in 2002, liquid natural gas, and Thousand Oaks was the first city in the county to have that. We've just recently purchased 25 CNG trucks that we're struggling to get fuel for right now, because it's a bit of a challenge, and we are probably the biggest user of the city's facility while ours is under construction. And we will have one that will be, have a reciprocal agreement, where we can be also a backup for the city for your fueling needs as well. But I just also want to keep it to the in-county and regional. You know, we've got Gold Coast Recycling, it's a great resource. We've got Agribin, and then Waste Management. We have just recently secured 60 years of disposal capacity with Ventura County as a priority. We feel very confident about the future of this community, and that all of the needs will be met by the haulers that have been here for the longest. You know, and every three years, Mr. Fox, as you pointed out, you know, staff, we've added new services every three years. Almost every three years, we've taken some reduction in the CPI that we were entitled to, and given additional services to the community as well. That being said, we certainly appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Mr. Smith, I actually had a question. I don't know if anybody else does. You, how many cities do you service? Not just in the county overall?
Well, in, well, Waste Management, my facility in Simi Valley, we've serviced about 14 different communities, and it's from Simi Valley operation.
And do, at some point, do they, do you have to actually bid for, do they go out for an open bid process? Have any of them?
Well, one of the companies that we did acquire, Calabasas, did go out to an RFP. And, and yes, I could say they did. That's the only one, none in Ventura County, you know, that's been in the service area for us in the 37 years that I've been in the business.
And how, when you first come into a, have you gone into any cities brand-new? I mean, what is the initial investment that you have to make? How many years does it take to pay that off? Let's say, opening a new franchise in Calabasas, how long would it be to, would you generally think that your initial investment's paid off?
Well, these days, you know, it's like 10 years on, on capital, you know? It's been seven, eight to 10 years. But it's becoming much more than that these days with the facilities, because historically, it's really only been your equipment, and whatever your, your truck loans or leases would be, and what the warranties on your carts and containers were. But these days, it's been your investment into the future for facilities that could accept and process your green waste materials locally, that could process and package your recyclables locally. And they mentioned carbon footprint. You know, we're very proud to be the sustainable community that we are, that all of the needs of the communities we serve are being able to be handled right here in Ventura County. So when you talk about the length of term to recoup your capital, it really depends on your investment. They mentioned a $50 million facility improvement and recycling center at the Simi Valley landfill. That's something that we're gonna be doing in pieces as part of the expansion. But that's a commitment that we've made to Ventura County that will happen in, you know, in our lifetime. So, you know, I'm sorry it's a long explanation for your question, but I hope I answered it.
Any other questions? Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Smith. Smith, correct?
Correct.
The, we heard the, from staff about negotiations and making the renewal more attractive and more competitive. And there was also a question as to whether, should this go out for bidding? Would you then change the terms? Would it be null and void? Would you reconsider to make it even more competitive? So I'm just wondering whether it, the deal that we have before us tonight is off the table if it goes out to bidding?
It's a little difficult to answer that. You know, we've spent many months negotiating on all the requests from the city, both on commercial and residential. And the premise of everything that we've done at this community in the last 30-plus years is based on term. So I really couldn't sit here today and say what would or wouldn't be on the table. I can just tell you that historically, our relationship is lent to mutual benefit on both sides, as back, far back is in the, in the 90s, and when we first were changing the carts and the collection, and every other week to weekly. So, you know, I could say that, you know, we've always been willing to work with this community, and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Thank you. Mr. Smith, other than the risk in the, I guess, the work of going through a bidding process, from a, from the business side, what would be some of the, some of the negatives in going through a bid process?
Other than, than the business side, the risks would be really knowing who your providers are gonna be. You know, you, we have a proven history.
No, what I'm saying is, from your perspective, I'm trying to get, I know how it would be, I think I know from the city's standpoint. I mean, I'm trying to get an understanding of, if we were to say, hey, we like everything, the service is great, but for the purposes of competition, we'd like to have a competition. From somebody that's been, that currently holds the contract, what are the negatives to that?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, I guess it's a little hard to answer the question. I'll do my best, you know? The negatives to it is upsetting a system that already works. You know, these systems are in place, the people understand how the programs work, our customers. They know the dates, they know the times, they know the drivers. And, you know, many of our 250 employees live and work in this community. All right? When you have a 97% satisfaction rate, as done by a survey that the city did, which you pointed out today. I mean, the, the risk of upsetting the service level that's, that's been expected, let alone all of the things that the current providers do locally. You know, the, the free services we give, the donations to the communities that we provide, that's just endless, you know? I, I could take up all my time, just talking about the things that we've done as a community partner. And, and the localness, you know, just, just being here and being vested in this community, and being able to be there when there's a, a big fire and you're setting up on Jan's Road. And we were there 24/7, in contact with the city manager. And those are things that really local providers can provide to the city, that would go away if you were being serviced by someone outside of the committee that hasn't, excuse me, the community, that hasn't made this long-term commitment, financial investment for the future.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I heard you, and I agree with you. My question is, from the business, from the hauler's perspective, is if, if we were to say, you know what, we'd like to go through a bidding process, let me, let me try it a different way. Is it essentially an issue of risk and uncertainty? Are those the two things from the business standpoint that, because I'm assuming you're very confident if you went through a bid process, you'd get the, you'd get the contract?
Well, that's, that's interesting you say that, because, you know, our prices have been public and our rates have been set in agreement with the city for all the years that we've been here.
Right.
So when your, your rates are public, you know, and we've seen this in our experience, anybody can come in that's, you know, qualified or not, depending on your criteria, and they could come up with a price that's lower than ours. That's a given, that's the first thing they'll do. You know, maybe you look at, you know, that's probably the biggest risk for us is that someone would come in, drop the price to something, you know, I'm sure the city would make sure that the apples-for-apples comparison was there, like, you know, you can't really see all of the elements that go into the rates that you have today. For example, there was a, and I, and I won't go through twenty of them, I'll just tell you one, for example.
Okay.
The Simi Valley landfill, for example, it does have higher rates than the Toll and Road landfill. Challenge is Thousand Oaks waste can't go to the Toll and Road landfill. And being that we, our rates at the landfill are controlled by the county, the county also imposes fees on the landfill, which gets passed on to our customers as well. So once you understand all the fees that are involved to come up with the rates that our customers pay, there's a lot of people involved in those rates, okay? You know, county fees, we pass it on to the city, and as you're aware, you know, millions of dollars go out to agencies that are collected by us, the hauler. So there's really a lot to it, Andy.
All right. Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
All right.
You bet.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Terry Howard. Terry Howard will be followed by Rondi Guthrie.
Hello. I'm Terry Howard, resident here at Thousand Oaks. I'll be brief. Moved here from Redondo Beach. We paid fifteen dollars a month, now we're paying more. Service here in Nordstrom, service there, Nordstrom minus. Thank you for the education I got tonight, after all these hours of sitting here, I know a lot about the trash business. But basically, I have to agree with Councilman Fox, I think my view is I should go out to bid. That's how you get a fair shake. And I'm in the telecommunications business and we do business with the city, and we certainly participated in bids over the years, some we won, some we didn't, but we felt the city got a great deal every time, so it does work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Rondi Guthrie, followed by Mr. Kidway.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, members of the council. My name is Rondi Guthrie with the Chris Com Company, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Crown Disposal. Staff is recommending to you this evening that you extend your solid waste contracts out to 2018 and 2021. These are contracts that have never gone out to bid and don't expire until 2015 and 2018. I would like to ask instead that you let these contracts expire and issue an RFP for solid waste services at the appropriate time. This is the responsible decision for you to make tonight on behalf of your residents and business owners. Due to the lack of competition in the solid waste industry in Ventura County, we see exorbitantly high residential and commercial rates. Unfortunately, you are only provided with rate comparisons from mostly within Ventura County where there, again, is virtually no competition and the same two haulers service virtually every city. I have provided you with a recent RFP pricing matrix from other Southern California communities that shows residential and commercial rates up to fifty percent less than what we are, you're paying in Thousand Oaks. Furthermore, as noted in your own staff report, the lowest rates in Ventura County are seen in Santa Paula, who recently underwent a competitive bidding process and contracted with Crown Disposal for solid waste services. Since no RFPs besides Santa Paula have been issued in Ventura County, we believe it is more appropriate to base rate comparisons on other Southern California communities who have recently gone out to bid. Competition is the best way to drive down costs and expand services, and you have that decision in your hands this evening. Part of staff's recommendation is based on the number of services agreed to as part of a contract extension. You can be assured that all of the services mentioned in your staff report are commonplace in every RFP that is being issued today and every contract that is being signed, including street sweeping services. It should be clarified that Santa Paula will soon include street sweeping services and the rates will stay exactly the same. It should also be clarified that the franchise fee in Santa Paula is approximately fourteen percent, and we actually see much higher franchise fees throughout Southern California with eight percent being on the low end. As a matter of fact, many of these programs such as food waste collection have been implemented in many cities and are well beyond a feasibility study or pilot program phase. The staff report also mentions that a residential rate freeze would be agreed to upon contract extension. Thousand Oaks deserves better than this. By opening up this contract to a competitive bidding process, you will find an immediate savings in rates, not just, not just a rate freeze. An actual rate reduction would equate to far greater savings than the three-point-four million referenced in your staff report. What we don't see in RFPs being issued today for any city service is a never-ending perpetually extended contract that has been in place since the nineteen-eighties and extended out to the twenty-twenty's. Most contracts have a set beginning and end with solid waste agreements ranging from five to ten years. Good government demands we take a long, hard look at every contract and make sure they are reasonable in price, length of term, and programs being offered. Clearly, there are many questions and comparisons that need to be made, but these can only be realized and answered during an open bidding process. It is time for the city of Thousand Oaks to exercise a fair, open, transparent, and competitive bidding process to ensure your residents and business owners are getting the best rates the market will bear. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Mr. Kidway is not here. Our next speaker is Marjorie Black. Ms. Black will be followed by Bill Camarillo.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Marjorie Black. I've been a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks, forty-four years, since nineteen-sixty-eight, and I was appalled to learn that our solid waste services have never gone out to bid. How do we know we're getting the best rates, best services, best recycling programs if we've never had true competition? I would strongly urge the councilmembers to engage in a competitive bidding process. I, for one, would welcome a reduction in my monthly rate, as I'm sure every other Thousand Oaks resident and business, business owner would. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Black. Bill Camarillo, followed by Jim Harrison. Hi, Mr. Camarillo.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow councilmembers. I also want to make a note that RFP stands for Real Fair Partnerships, and we've been here a long time, and we have a tremendous amount of infrastructure built in Ventura County. Agarman works from Monterey County all the way through San Diego, and in every county I go, there's a tremendous amount of need to figure out how to manage these waste streams. We don't have that here. We have great partnerships with Waste Management, E.J. Harrison and Sons, Gold Coast Recycling, and we've figured out how to solve our problems locally. I see all the time, support your local business. We're trying to manage our own problems here locally in Ventura County, and we've done that with our local landfills, our local compost facilities, and today, the vision of the future is about sustainability so that we can create economic development, environmental benefits, and social responsibility, and we do that by creating common threads between the waste industry, industry, technology, and agriculture. And over the last twenty years, I have figured out a common thread between waste, energy, and agriculture, and have partners like Limonera Company that are hundred-and-twenty-year-old companies today, helping us build these biogenic energy parks to manage our own waste streams. Partnerships with Howling Nursery today, hundred-and-twenty-six-acre tomato farm that produces over seven-thousand acres of tomatoes within a hundred-and-twenty-six-acre footprint that demand green energy. Companies that we work today like Amgen and Pentair Pools that are manufacturers in Thousand Oaks that we provide sustainability programs for, helping them get to zero waste so they can be more competitive in their market space, because in today's environment, you don't need regulation. These companies realize if they are not socially responsible and they don't get to zero waste and sustainability, that they have potential of losing market share. Today, programs developed with Albertson's Company, with Waste Management and the Harrisons have helped them get many of their stores to zero waste, where we put products back in their stores as well. Those are just simple examples. Today, Agarman is representing the future on how we take wasted resources, today we call refuse. In the, in the future, with technology, we transform into energy sources. Waste Management's doing that today with their CNG plants, creating electricity, converting over ninety vehicles to natural gas. Just this month, Cal, California Air Resources Board adopted negative carbon fuel from anaerobic digestion. Harrison Industries have just invested in buying one we'll have here in a couple of months for food waste to help us meet AB three forty-one so we can be ahead of the curve. So we are all conscientious about price today. Nothing is going down with the way of input cost, but our prices continue to fall, and we have to learn to manage within. And the only way we can be sustainable is to work together, to have partnerships. We need a sense of security so we can continue to invest in this community, and I appreciate your time, happy to answer any questions. I tried to fit as much into three minutes as I could, that probably would take three hours, so, thank you very much.
Did a good job there. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Camarillo? Mr. Price? No?
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Jim Harrison, and Mr. Harrison will be followed by Nan Drake.
Mayor, councilmembers, I'd like to apologize, I lost about sixty-five percent of my hearing, I left my hearing aids home, so I don't know what's been said in the meeting. So I'm, so I, they've been making notes to me. So basically, I'm just telling you who we are. I'm a partner with my brothers in Newbury Disposal. Our motto is "Service is Everything." This year, this year, we're, we're celebrating our eightieth year in business in Ventura County. We've always been very progressive. Back in the forties, we built one of the first cardboard baleers in Ventura County. We were collecting food waste, or them days called garbage, fed it to the hogs, and when the AB nine thirty-nine passed in nineteen-ninety, we built a processing center to process recyclables. When our local landfill closed, we built a transfer station to transfer the waste. When the state passed laws about clean air standards, we were early compliance with those laws. We have partnered with all the cities, the county, other haulers, and everyone to try to make an effort to reduce traffic and pool resources and do business in Ventura County as much as possible. There's a lot of laws that have been passed, and we've always been out front. A lot of them are sunsetting in just eight years, and we have spent millions of dollars preparing to help the cities comply with these, these laws. What is the future? Well, the future is, we think we have to maximize the collection of organics, which includes food waste. Food waste has unique problems in managing it properly, so regular compliance is really a big consideration. What is the future? Well, we hope someday it produce fuel for our trucks from waste and to produce power from waste. Thousand Oaks is a wonderful city. It, very interested, the town is very interested in doing the right things. We serve a lot of cities. Thousand Oaks has the highest recycling rate for green waste in the whole county. It also has the highest recycling rate for recyclables of any city that we serve. So that's all I have to say, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison, and our last speaker is Nan Drake.
Good evening. Thank you for your patience. Trash is an interesting subject. Those of you that know me know that I'm one of the trash queens. I can either take credit or take blame for what's happened in the last twenty-five years in Ventura County. I was one of the people that was on the Waste Committee that decided how we were going to do it in Ventura County. And then I was lucky enough to get appointed to the Waste Board, so I got to go to Sacramento early on, and I actually got to vote for Gold Coast Recycling's contract, which was the first one in the state of California. So we have a very, very, very great record of not only compliance, but being way ahead of the curve. And why is that? Because all of the cities work together to figure out the best plan, and I think part of that was keeping it local, because it's really all about how we work together, it's about economic development, it's about jobs, and now all the buzzwords are green, you give your, a business award for green businesses. What we have created in conjunction with Agarman is basically a plan of action that when new large businesses come to Thousand Oaks and they say, "We want to be in a green city," you could say, "Way, we've got everything." We have probably the model, state-of-the-art biogenic facility within our county, and I think we'll have that in two years. We've met with all of the board of supervisors, talked to them about it, they know we need our own, our local, in Ventura County, organic facility, and I think that's one of the things you have to think about it. You have two local haulers who have been your partners all these years, who have never once not followed a request that you have made. We have fulfilled every single contract obligation, we have never faulted. If you look at apples and oranges, services rendered, compliance, and that's a one big thing. You have to look at a lot of people who have, people that are doing their trash, and look at they have non-compliance records that are just awful. I mean, just almost embarrassing, and I would be embarrassed to have somebody like that serve a city that I lived in. So I'm asking you to look at the history, be part of the team for the future, because that's where we're heading. We are heading into the future, we're going to give you all the, all the cards in the deck, you're going to have every one of them, we are going to, Ventura's going to maintain its leadership role, and we want you to stay with us. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Drake? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we have one speaker card, "Do not extend the solid waste contracts." I would very much like to have the opportunity to open up the bidding process so all of us taxpayers can save money on trash collection. I know of neighboring communities that pay half. All right, do we have staff comments to the, the public comments?
Just one, Madam Mayor. The, one of the speakers talked about what the franchise fees were in Santa Paula, and our research broke out, what we did when we compared franchise fees, it was the actual franchise fee that goes to the general fund, we look at that separately than the solid, what we call solid waste management fee. And so comparing apples to apples, in Santa Paula, there is, on the commercial side, it is fourteen percent as the total, as the speaker indicated, but when you compare it to our total fees, it's almost seventeen percent. And then on the, I'm sorry, on the, on the residential side, we're at thirteen percent and Santa Paula would be at ten. So our research, I just wanted to clarify the numbers, because we were comparing, when I said eight percent franchise fee, it was just the component that goes to the general fund.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, Nick, you had staff comments?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, there are a lot of questions about the bidding process and so on, just as a reminder, so you, for the big picture and how we deal with bidding as a municipality, with construction projects, almost always, if not for every construction project over a certain dollar amount, say a hundred thousand dollars, we absolutely go out to bid, and there is certainly value, there's also federal and state laws about bidding, so we do have a very competitive process for capital projects. For professional services, it, sometimes, there are certainly cases where it makes sense to go out to bid, like with our auditors and accountants and financial advisors, bond counsel, that type of thing, so we, every few years, we'll go out to bid for that. And then there are some cases where for continuity of services or you, a unique service with just one provider, we dispense of that bidding process, but it's done in an open environment with council authorization and approval every step along the way. When you deal with enterprise operations such as refuse collection, which is often done by a municipality, not so much in our county, it, it's one of those, it depends. Because this is a, a unique service that is complex and involves large, long-term, multi-generational capital investments, there's a big financial investment, and there are bond issues and that type of thing, and that has to be paid back. So you're dealing with the refuse collection, where they collect the, the way- thing, and as well as manage a landfill. So, there's multiple facets involved. So, it certainly can be bid, but in order to do that, we would have to discuss how we do that. So, it's really a council policy decision as to whether or not you do that. So, I hope that helps. Thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah. Let me ask staff a question. I'm just going to put it right out there. I think when you are going to terminate a contract, particularly one that has provided historically outstanding service, and not just the service, but just a variety of things, I don't take exception to a single thing that was represented by the public comment tonight. That being said, I also believe that at some point in time in a city's history, even things like waste hauling have to have a checkpoint, have to have some type of check-in to see if, in fact, we're getting the best service at competitive price. Not necessarily the best price, but a competitive price, because for me, the answer would be, "I don't know." If a constituent would recall me up and say, and ask me, "Are we getting the best service at a competitive price?" The answer would be, "I don't know." And the reason is, is because we have information that in cities that are very, very nice communities, which I have to believe are very interested in good services and environmental programs and those numbers of things, that the prices are pretty competitive. So, my question to the staff is, can we enter into a competitive bid process without canceling the contract? Because I don't think Waste Management has done anything to warrant canceling the contract. They're also in business. They understand council has a responsibility to, from time to time, certainly not every three years, but we've never done it, time to time, look at, hey, are we providing our residents with not just the best service, but at a competitive price? And it seems to me the only way to do that is, you know, every 20 years or so, whatever, have a competitive bidding process. So, the question is, can we do it without canceling the contract? I don't know if that's a legal question. All right, Mr. Norman.
Thank you. The way the contract is worded is, it wouldn't be a termination, it's just a choice not to extend beyond 2015 and 2018 for the various franchises in effect. If you do nothing, if council decides to do nothing by June 30th, the agreements automatically extend. So, those are your choices, or you can choose to extend per staff's recommendation. So, I think council, if they want to go the RFP route, would really have no choice but to direct staff to issue a writing to Waste Management and Newberry saying that they're not going to extend the existing agreements.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Norman. What if we asked staff to sit down with Waste Management and negotiate different existing language to the existing contract that would allow for a competitive bid process while at the same time maintaining the current language in terms of service? And, like I said, where I'm coming from here is, I think we are ultimately accountable to the residents, that we are going through an open, transparent process from time to time. I think the threshold is tonight, or is at this moment. So, if we were to sit down with Waste Management and negotiate language that would provide for a competitive process while at the same time not altering our existing contract, would we then be in a position to do that without having to, in a sense, terminate the contract?
Well, we have to do something to the contract. We need some type of an agreement with Waste Management. Maybe it's a side letter agreement, making it very clear about what the parameters of that would be. I would feel very uncomfortable doing that outside of some type of contractual amendment.
Right. I would agree with that. So, let me ask staff, is there a time-critical element here, or would it be prudent to continue this item for two weeks, whatever it might be, to allow staff time to sit down with Waste Management? I have absolutely no idea whether they have an interest in this, but I'm basically putting it on the record, and I don't know what my colleagues feel, is that I think something -- there needs to be something other than looking at a competitive process to warrant a cancellation of the contract. You guys have done a great job, plain and simple. And it needs to be a competitive process. And so, my question is, how do we get there? How do we find the common ground to maintain what you have done is a great job? All the local testimony, all that stuff, I think, really matters, and at the same time, have a competitive process? So, if, in fact, you really are the best service at the most competitive rates, not necessarily the lowest rates, but the most competitive rates, we can look our residents in the eye and say, "We went through the process." And so, would two weeks be sufficient for staff?
Yes, yes, it would. And we would bring back a fourth option then, which would be some contractual arrangement that it provided for the RFP.
I have absolutely no idea if the rest of the council concurs with that, but that's certainly kind of the direction that I think we need to go to manage this. So, I'm not making a motion, but that's kind of where I'm at.
Councilmember Bill Dillipina?
I'd also wanted to find out from our city attorney. We've been having the same -- we've been extending our agreements with Waste Management without any provision for a temporary extension or anything like that in case it ever went out to bid? There is no provision or clause that would say?
That's correct. These agreements historically have been amended every three years with an option to keep extending.
Okay.
And I don't know why that developed that way. If that was just how it was done in the business, it was before my time.
So, the way it is worded right now is, if we were to send it out for bidding, they would basically, if we were to take the contract language verbatim, they would stop the service altogether, June 30th?
No.
Seven.
Their current agreements, right now, if we were to choose not to extend, would still go out to 2015 and 2018.
Ah, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Right. So, unless there was some RFP process that was put in place that they agreed to, that contract, those contractual provisions would be valid and enforceable.
The residential, even if we decide tonight to go out for bid, it's seven years from now that their contract would end.
Well, no, that --
Oh, my goodness. No, I know, I know that.
For residential.
I'm just thinking, the world changes, the recycling and waste world changes quite a bit in seven years, and I don't know if we can ever compare apples to apples with the industry changing as much and as often as it does.
Well, let me, if I could, the, and I think staff will, the amount of investment that whoever the waste hauler puts in, and I don't know, Mr. Smith, I don't know if you testified to it, but I remember when you guys went to the alternative fuel trucks, that was a gigantic investment. And so, you know, entering a contract for a three-year contract, when you're making, I don't know, you know, a $40 million investment, they're just not going to do that. No one will do that. So, that's why they have that. Very common, by the way, because I asked that question when we were having that discussion.
Mr. Price? Did you have any?
I would have to agree with Councilmember Fox in that I've, in my short time on the council, have not heard any complaints. Being a resident here for the 21 years that I have, I don't have any complaints personally. I think both of you do magnificent things, and I know that you're very, very active in the community as well. And I've read in the staff report, all of the little extra things that you have thrown in over the years, and I think it's tremendous. I also think that it would be very difficult for, if not impossible, for somebody to come in and offer the services that you two companies provide to Thousand Oaks. So, with that said, I do also believe that in order to be transparent, I think that it is the time to take a look at some other options and see if there is anybody else out there who can compete.
All right, Mr. Mitnick, you said you had a suggestion.
Yeah. For clarification here from Madam Mayor and council, the negotiated approach to refuse collection service is a common practice that was articulated in the written staff report and the verbal report. Whether that's ideal or not, that's another issue, but it is, it has been a common practice. So, what we would, what I'm hearing here, what we can certainly do is, I'll come back to you at the next council meeting on June 26 with some cleanup language. And in the meantime, staff will work with representatives from Waste Management and Harrison Disposal to see if they would agree to the rate commitments for the next year, or perhaps the next year, a couple of years or so, and at the same time, go through the RFP process and spend six months or so to do that, and see what proposals we receive, and then come back to council. Also, the next, we would appreciate it, staff, because we heard some, we need to research some of the allegations that were made tonight about rates and franchise fees and so on. We like to clean up that and clarify the facts for the city council, so you understand that a little bit better. So, we can do that and come back on the 26th.
Okay. So, I mean, basically, we're talking about a vote to continue till the next meeting?
You want me to make a motion? All right. I'm going to move that we continue this item, that on an open hearing basis, Mr. Norman, or we just continue it?
You can just continue. It's not a public hearing item.
Okay. Continue this item for two weeks to provide staff an opportunity to sit down with our current haulers and negotiate different language that would enable the council to maintain the currently negotiated deal points and, at the same time, allow for a competitive bid process that would be opened up over the next six months.
All right. Vote on that, please. Comments? All right, let's have a vote.
The motion carries for sure.
Committee, commission, board reports, there are none. City council is successor agency to TO redevelopment agency reports, there are none. Council follow-ups, none. And item 12B is the updated council assignments, and obviously, everybody has had to take on some extra work there. We'll see how well we cover it. Staff is going to be helping with some of the meetings that we won't be able to attend, but do we need to vote on this? Council assignments? Any comments? Bill Dillipina?
Technically, it needs council concurrent, so I would recommend a motion.
Okay. So, for disclosure purposes, two commissions provide stipends, but those, for those stipends, people, they don't, they can still vote?
Correct. The FPTC just came down with a ruling on that very issue within the last couple of months to clarify that they don't have to disclose that.
Well, we just disclosed it.
Fair enough.
They don't have to abstain. They don't have to abstain.
Correct. That's correct.
All right. Councilmember Bill Dillipina?
Yes. I just wanted to comment on the revised list and how I appreciate the fairness in distributing all of the committee assignments. I know we had a discussion two weeks ago that was adversarial, but this really answers all of my concerns, and I appreciate that. And I also wanted to say for the record, the stipend that I received from VCTC, I'm going to, I'm giving to charity, the Conejo Compassion Coalition here in Thousand Oaks.
Okay. And if anybody still, I'm still offering association of water agencies if somebody would like it. I'm kidding. I already signed up for it. Okay. Vote, please.
Motion carries for sure.
City manager, look at, look at the big audience. They are waiting with bated breath on your state budget update and your follow-up request for the public and announcements and upcoming issues.
The state budget is still not balanced. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the latest is, the state budget deficit is approaching $16 billion, that's with a B. The Democratic leadership has released its proposed budget, has a number of trigger cuts and so on, and just got word that moments ago, the governor says that the Democratic proposed budget is structurally imbalanced. So, we remain in a wait-and-see position. However, with the new state law, the legislature has until this Friday, June 15, to adopt a budget, or they don't get paid. So, we'll have to see what happens. There's a lot riding on the upcoming November election and the proposed income tax increases and sales tax increases and that type of thing to help balance the budget. So, we're going to keep an eye on it. The community's still going to be significantly negatively impacted by what happened with redevelopment, as will the schools, and so, we're dealing with that. No additional follow-up from items discussed tonight at the council meeting. The next city council meeting will be in two weeks, on June 26. At this point in time, we have a few hearings, one dealing with the annual landscape and lighting assessment district levy. The next has to deal with the affordable housing inclusionary fees. We'll provide a one-year update on that. We will have the proposed budget for 2012-13 in front of council. Department reports, of course, we'll have the refuse collection franchise, or issue that we just, the council just discussed, we'll come back to you on that. The cultural arts plan, the one-year update, and the impact analysis for the recently proposed council member vacancy initiative, that's scheduled to be on the agenda for the 26th. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Item, we already have done our closed session. Public notices, there are none, and we are adjourning to our regular meeting on June 26. Good night, everybody.